Tuesday, July 28. And just mention that the permission has been requested to video this meeting and the camera is set up over there, so if anyone who doesn't wish to appear on film, just make sure that you're not within the sight lines of the camera. So with that, I'll just now ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please. Counselor Valerian, Counselor Sanjanko, all in favor? And that's carried. One set of minutes from the previous House of Evening, July 21. And again, just ask for a motion to adopt those minutes, please. Counselor Lumley, Counselor Valerian, all in favor? And that's carried as well. We have one delegation this evening. Mr. Russell is appearing here to speak to us. Mr. Russell, welcome. I understand you have a presentation, so you...
Mr. Mayor? Okay, okay. Now, look at the slides. Okay, so that's all set for? Okay, mic check, one, two, three. Is that loud enough, guys? Back in the chambers? Okay, great. No, that's probably not very good. Sure, great. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're set to go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Russell, a resident of 471 Eagle Crest Drive here in Gibson's. Longtime resident, grew up here. My family, longtime merchants. We had businesses for over 60 years here in town and on the coast. Sixty-five, actually, to be exact. So I would like to think I have some general knowledge of commerce and moving forward and what it means to the town and our community. And it's my sincere hope that this great project that George goes through. And in just a moment, I have some evidence that a lot of people in this town share that opinion. But first, how did we get here? Well, we voted you guys in, all five of you, including Mr. White, who's not here. But in November, a large majority of residents voted in what was the highest electoral turnout in Gibson's ever. And that's saying a lot. As a matter of fact, during that civic election, it was one of the highest electoral turnouts in British Columbia. And they voted you into power to move our town forward, to, among other things, create a broader tax base in order to renew and maintain the infrastructure and to support an economy that enables employment and growth for a healthy and sustainable community. Now, at the all candidates meeting, I believe it was October 30th, you all supported this direction. Oh, it's not moving, Selena. For those of you in the back, we have another slide here to show. Okay. Does it move? Okay, there we go. We're in business. Anyway, at that all candidates meeting, you all supported this direction. Mayor Rowe stated our choice was either significant tax increases or development to increase our tax base to cover infrastructure costs. Counselor Sanjanko, you focused on families and our future. Counselor Lumley, that night, said he wanted to stabilize taxes, have planned economic growth, and new business creating opportunity for our youth. Counselor Valerian said the town is ready for its transformation. Counselor White, who was chosen to not be part of this discussion, said that night he wanted Gibson's to move forward and develop a new identity and that we are no longer a logging and fishing community. Now, based on these statements from Mayor and councilors and the recent door-to-door gathering we did of signatures for our petition, many residents we found are confused, confused as to why the development permit process for the George Hotel and residences is still being discussed. It's been a long time. Now, we went door-to-door, and when you do go Main Street in any town, you really get the feel for the temperature of the community, and boy, did we hear a lot of positive stuff, a lot of different reaction. One 93-year-old pioneer of Gibson's told us, "I want to see the George built for future generations," and that the town doesn't go backwards. But we did find a lot of confused residents. One person told us, "We voted, why are we doing this again?" Another said, "What are these councilors doing?" And even another said, "We understood that George was going ahead, so what's happening?" That was a common refrain and a little disturbing. So, Mayor and Council, on behalf of 1,051 Gibson's residents and business owners, we present this petition, Gibson's residents speak out for a second time. And it's presented to remind you of the wishes of the often silent and moderate majority who voted, and key word is "voted," for economic progress and stability, as well as job opportunities for young families and our youth. The majority who voted for the town to move forward, not backward. So we urge to move forward without any further delay on the George Hotel and residences as currently designed, while of course, protecting our aquifer and meeting all regulatory requirements. Now, before I present the petition, there are a few items that I want to highlight. And most disturbing, and I think you might agree, is the fear of many business owners in this town who support the George. They wanted to sign this petition, but they received threats to the businesses, their business, if they supported the George Hotel. And I hope you agree, this intimidation of business owners and fellow residents is totally unacceptable behavior in a democratic society, any society for that matter. But on a positive note, a broad base of support was received from residents on almost every street and lane in our town. Even from out of town, but they can't put their name on this petition, and they didn't. At least, they didn't count out. Many residents from Langdale to Seashell liked the idea. They wanted to sign the petition to show their support for a hotel that they saw with amenities that would be great coastwide. And finally, and we can't understate this, this was breaking news last week in our town, unfortunately, the permanent layoff of up to 180 positions at House Sound Palton Paper, along with, I don't know, maybe 14 or so empty stores, and we've all seen them, and their laid-off staff, emphasizes the need for the creation of jobs in our community, simple as that. If we're to survive and thrive, job creation has to be even more important than ever. And I would like to think it's pretty hard to argue that. So, in conclusion, on behalf of the 1,051 residents and business owners in our great town, thank you for receiving our petition and for recognizing and acting upon the wishes of the silent and moderate majority. Now, Mayor, just before we get going, let's lay out some of the ground rules, or Mayor and Council for that matter. The ground rules for signing this petition, because you might have that question. All signatures were gathered door-to-door at the place of residence or business. All duplicate signatures, and there are some, are indicated but are not part of the final account. All signatures inadvertently received from residents in other areas of the coast, which we touched on, are marked with a question mark, and they're not part of the total count. And as well, the total count was checked by two residents. So with that, I present this to the mayor. And... The information to... Counselors, copies of some of the major points, media, statements of the gentleman. There's some pages left. You're most welcome. What does he have to say? I'm not even ready to... Hi, guys, sir.
Counselor Sanjanko was just comparing what was the wording at the top of the petition before we signed.
The wording, um... Well, we have it right there as well. I could paraphrase it, but it's probably not a good idea. Yeah, oh, okay, great. All right. Okay, Gibson's residents speak out for the second time. That is the title of the petition. "We, the undersigned residents and/or/business owners of Gibson's, remind council that they were elected by a majority of residents because we thought each counselor understood the imperative for a broad tax base to fund infrastructure, social, and environmental needs, and recognize that the economy and jobs contribute to a healthy and sustainable community." And it goes on to say, "In order to fulfill the expectations of the majority of the electorate, we call for the council to proceed without any further delays in the approval process and confirm construction of the George Hotel and residences as currently designed while protecting the aquifer and meeting all regulatory requirements." And under that, whether it be a business or a resident allocation, they were asked to sign the name if they were in favor, along with their address, signature, postal code. Is that answered, please?
Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russell. There's no question in that this particular development generates a lot of very keen interest in the town, and this certainly demonstrates that as well. We are very cognizant of regulatory requirements, and we are striving to at least move the process forward as quickly as we can, but still respecting those requirements. We certainly indicated that a decision has to be made. It needs to be put to rest, whatever that ultimate decision might be. So you'll see tonight, there's a number of reports dealing with the next stages, and depending on how council responds to those, when we hear from our staff, we can expect that we may be seeing a public process certainly in the early, early fall. I just too want to comment on your reference to 180 families that are affected by the recent announcement at House Sound Palton Paper. I know almost a third of our volunteer fire department is affected by that announcement. And there's going to be many other families as well. Tomorrow afternoon, I'll be meeting with Ministry of Trump's Industry and Tourism Representatives, along with some federal representatives of House Sound Palton Paper and other elected officials, to see what we can do to try to help this transition, this kind of affect our community, and see what ways we can sort of smooth that back to... I'm anticipating a very difficult time ahead for a number of our neighbors over the next , the next while. So there's no other questions. The council will move on, but thank you very much for what you brought in. Okay, so next item there is just to receive the minutes from the committee of the whole meetings, so just have a motion for that. Counselor Sanjanko, thank you. Counselor Valerian, thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. 6.1.2 is the permissive tax exemptions that were discussed at the committee, so again, just ask for a motion to approve those, as well as the recommendation to the Director of Finance, Counselor Lumley, Counselor Valerian, all in favor? And that's carried as well. Signed by all reviews, 6.1.3, just to use the current signed law, bylaw for further community input, and then review election signage requirements with the next update of the town's election bylaws. So again, motion, Counselor Sanjanko, thank you. Counselor Valerian, thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. 7.1, many want to do a brief comment on that, please.
Certainly, I'd agree with you, Mr. Mayor. So the town of Gibson's is a member of the House Sound Forum, and through that work, the forum has engaged the province on ways to consider the impacts of current and future proposed development in House Sound. And what the province has come up with is a process called a cumulative impact assessment that proposes to consider the full impacts of works to be done in the sound. And so it's in front of council, there's a motion that has been supported by most other communities, and they are part of the forum. And it's just to give assurances to the province that we're supportive of that process as well.
Counselor Valerian, you read a couple of those. Do you want to comment to that or move it?
Yeah, just to chime in, say basically this is a, is a big step forward for, for House Sound and its comprehensive, in a comprehensive planning process, so I'll make the motion as recommended.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Lumley, all in favor? And that's carried. 7.2, George Hotel Residences, Design Change in Response to Geotechnical Report. So I'll turn to our Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a presentation, I do have the illustrations in this report to put on screen, just need to approve. This report about design changes in response to the geotechnical report contains three illustrations, three sketches that show some updates and some further detail for the former character of the proposed project. It's something we asked following the geotechnical report earlier this year. Because of that report, the lower levels of the building, buildings were raised, and that results in changes on Cowport Road and on the Seville side, and also for the restaurant. To start with, the Cowport Road elevation, let's see if this is... It's a bit darker. Let me see. For the Cowport Road, the main change over there is that the P1 and P2 levels for the parquet being raised. It also means that the plaza between the buildings is now also erased compared to Cowport Road. And this shows some of the results, or changes that that brings about. The elevation between Cowport Road and Plaza is now around seven feet, or is that... Two, over, just over two meter? No, it should be less, actually. Yeah. And it means that from, standing from Cowport Road, you look at the stairs leading out to the plaza, and there's also a ramp leading to the plaza. You still would see in the background the mountains and Keats Island. Depending on your length, on your own length, you wouldn't necessarily see the wall. So that's a change compared to earlier on. This is a trade-off as a result of the protection of the aquifer. Some other feature in there is a stacked stone wall where the ramp is in the middle there, there's a ramp going up, and that's a stacked stone wall. There's some other features there to create a landscape transition between the road and the plaza. Some of these changes fit with the guidelines, except maybe for that, that elevation of the plaza where we somewhat have reduced transparency towards the ocean. Let's see, I'll move on to the next one, which is the restaurant. Yeah, sorry for the small lettering. I'll talk over, I'll explain the highlights. So with the concern, or the thing we were wondering about is the restaurant was the height and the pilings, because the restaurant will be located at a level that is safe for the year 2065. So in 50 years from now, sea level would have risen about a meter, a half, sorry, half meter. And to accommodate for that, the restaurant would be built higher, approximately one point three meters higher for a fee. And this, this drawing shows some of the design details that have been added to make it look attractive still. And features that were added or were specified now is the use of timber and some metal steel cables. And those are applied here, where you can see those cross braces under the platform for the restaurant. And also, those features would be used in the railing for the deck of the restaurant, and the viewing platform here between the restaurant and the land, the land side. And the waterfront walkway is here on the right. Let's see. So those, those wood elements and nautical elements, they built them, but already was changed to the restaurant in response to the Advisory Planning Commission, and it feels that it fits well with, well, related to the context, which is a historical harbor and some of the existing builders in the area. The third one, the last one, is about the waterfront walkway. And let's see. In the issue there is that to accommodate for sea level rise in 2065, the waterfront walkway will be raised. Compared to the current elevation, we're looking at three meters higher, around 10 feet. And this drawing shows how that would be connected to the adjacent areas. And I should mention that the current sea wall is already pretty low, and probably if we would have an extreme tide event combined with storm, or over time when sea level will rise, we're already at, at risk of flooding there. And this shows a solution that eventually would need to be considered throughout the town where impossible, and will protect the building, but also part of the Wharren Park. And to look at that north part, it shows how that will be matched up with existing grade. And most of the height difference is covered right at the start, and there's a combination of a ramp and a stairs leading down, well, at least not all the way down, but it takes a 5% grade to make sure it's accessible for wheelchairs, for example, and for people that have mobility issues. And from there on, the pathway will continue from that 5% slope, actually says 6.2 here, so I guess the slope varies. And then midway, the park somewhere, it would actually be up at the existing grade. And another feature on this drawing is this blob here, that's the band shell. It says, "Location of new band shell," but also be the existing one, because obviously with this ramp there and some stairs, the existing location is not, cannot be maintained. So either the existing band shell can move that way, or there will be a new band shell. And that way, it shows how that grade difference would be covered, and the additional benefit of that creates changes also that some of the park is now protected as well from future sea level rises. To the south, less detail there, open for discussion, but if it would be simply a graded trail, a graded, gravel pathway, it would take over 200 feet to match up with existing grade on that side, so it would be adjacent to the shoulder lane properties over our current sewer right of way and the walkway that we already have there, gradually that height difference would be covered that way. So that's, that's a summary of the design changes, and in the report, we have the recommendation to support the design changes and make it part of the future consideration of the development. Thank you.
Okay, so as you indicated, these are changes that are brought about primarily to accommodate, one, the aquifer, to make sure that states above that. And then, secondly, our requirements around sea level rise to accommodate that. And this, this sort of level is something that eventually we'll probably see along the whole of the waterfront of the town at some point in terms of height. That's the things progress, is that sort of the summary of it? Okay. Counselor Sanjanko?
Wait, I just wondered if you could go to the Marine Restaurant just for a second? I just had a... Sorry. I just had a question about the Marine Restaurant, or clarification. My comment is that the visual appeal of how the supportive pilings are treated is going to be really important over the next 50 years. And you mentioned some, I missed the comment, you mentioned something about the APC, and I wondered if you could just repeat that, because that was one thing that we talked about this last time that kind of jumped out at me as well.
Yeah, so my comment about the APC Advisory Planning Commission was that after the presentation to the APC in December 2013, back then, the restaurant was very conceptual and not very detailed, and the APC had suggested to include more historical elements. And in response to that, you see, for example, this window pane here, it's a division, kind of old-style, smaller window panes, and the use of wood and metal surfaces. It was quite a change from what it was. It used to be, the concept was quite modern-looking, but it was changed to become more of a, well, still a new building, but there's historical references.
Counselor Valerian?
Thank you for bringing up the APC. I'm understanding they've been involved in this all the way along, and they haven't made a comment since November 2013, which is a year and a half ago. I'm wondering whether, before I make a motion, I'd like to hear from some of the other councilors, but it seems to me that there could be some value in going back for advice now. The changes you're talking about to the flood construction level, I think are all positive changes preparing us for sea level rise, and that should probably be endorsed. But the design has changed on other, in other ways since the APC last commented, so there's changes to facades, roof lines, there's an addition of a viewing platform, and some materials changes. So from my point of view, just for additional information and advice, recognizing they're an advisory panel, but we're about to, we're about to probably go to a public hearing. The more information out there, the better. It seems to me that having the APC give, give their impressions of the changes that have been made, a lot of them as a result of their recommendations, would be valued more for people here. So I was, I'm looking at the last page of the Director's of Planning's report, and I'm suggesting that we consider adding the APCPS for advice, not just about these sketches, but about the, I guess, the most recent set of exterior renderings, about that, the client or the proponent submitted some renderings in, for our May meeting that are updated a little bit, so I think it would be helpful. And this is not to add any kind of delay, no one's more interested in me in keeping this moving, but I think if we could ask them to meet the first week of September, if they don't, maybe it's a question for staff, would that delay this process in any way we're talking, whether meeting late September, early October? If we could get their minutes, I've got September 11th, would that represent any kind of delay?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The APC is meeting in August for another project, so I think it's the third week of August, so it would be possible, if council wishes so, to forward it to the APC a bit then, and then the minutes would be available, I mean, you said, for sure.
Personally, I wouldn't support that. I think we're well past the stage and what referred the Advisory Planning Commission. They've given us their, their input overall. There's been some changes since then. I think that this project now is really at a stage where it has to be determined by elected officials and not sort of put off to other people that are volunteers. I think that we have to shoulder whatever decisions are ultimately made, and there will be an opportunity for sort of a public presentation, as well as a public hearing. Counselor Lumley?
I, I hear where Counsel Valerian's coming from, but when I looked at the things, I thought they were better changes. So, yeah, I probably, the, the whole changes to the, to the restaurant facade and everything like that, I think it, it looks more what the town's trying to, to create, to create from a visual, so I'm not sure with the APC, how much effect they would have on me really. I think it's, the changes are pretty positive, so I'd be happy to move this.
Any further comments? Counselor Valerian?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion for the record, see if I get a second here, but so move an amendment that the Advisory Planning Commission asked for advice regarding July 20th sketches and the most recent exterior renderings for the George Hotel and Residences, and that this be provided by end of August.
Okay, one second here. Okay. So return to the motion that's there at 7.2 then, ask for a mover of that. Counselor Lumley, thank you. Second. Counselor Valerian, thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. 7.3, George Hotel Residences, Traffic Study, Other Outstanding Items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report about traffic study summarizes the results of the final draft.
All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. 7.3, George Town Residence Traffic Study, other outstanding items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report about traffic study summarizes the results of the final draft. The draft has been looked at, I think, twice now. And this is the final draft. There's still some review, final review going on on our part and the Ministry of Transportation, that we have to look at it as well. The key results of the traffic study are that for the intersections that were investigated, especially the ones on Highway 101, Gibson's Way, Harper Gibson's, its project doesn't result in that much additional traffic. Then those intersections need to be changed. There are two spots that need to be monitored and possibly the traffic signals need to be adjusted. If over time, combined with the other growth in traffic throughout the region, changes need to be made. But other than that, there are no key major improvements required. With regards to parking, there's an outline of the required parking based on my zoning bylaw. And what is proposed is to have a reduction in the requirements based on a package of alternative transportation solutions that the applicant has in mind. Possibly use a passenger ferry or a shuttle boat or a bus to get guests to the facility. And improvements to a bus stop. And with that package in mind, the traffic consultant states that the requirements for parking could be reduced. And that reduction or some type of reduction could be added to the zoning bylaw. And the way I think staff looks at that, looking for my report here, but I think in my recommendation, I'm suggesting to add a general provision to the zoning bylaw for that, to the rezoning bylaw for this particular project. And that way, we have a chance to finalize the traffic study and make sure that at a future date, we'll make sure that we're satisfied with those proposed reductions in parking. Now, there's also a couple of other topics in that report which I would briefly touch on because most of them have been reported back to council in the past. And also because there's still other discussion with the applicant. And some of it will come up in the next report. Yeah, I think those other topics, servicing, housing agreement and all that stuff is under the next report. So I'll keep it to this summary. And I'm very lucky to answer any questions we have.
Okay, so basically, under the current zoning bylaw, it would require 242 parking spaces for this development. And what's being considered, subject to, as you indicate there, subject to a professional report by a traffic engineer, the possibility of reducing the parking down to about 216 rather than 242. Is that certain, the number of that?
Yes.
And that's, yeah, okay. Counselor Sanjanko?
I'm just wondering, maybe if I could just again ask for you to confirm. So any intersection concerns will have to pass a final review by the Ministry of Transportation as well, would be known?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the traffic study itself is going to be reviewed. And we'll have to hear from them and make sure that the report addresses their needs as well.
Thank you. And just one more. I was wondering if you could just say something about, I was curious about the possibility of more parallel parking spots closer to five corners. That caught my attention.
Yes, that's an idea that I've been identifying with staff. There's a couple of islands there of concrete that are, well, if they would be removed or narrow to adjust the sidewalk width, you could have additional parking there. It's one of the options we had in mind. If the on-street parking that is changing or disappearing because of the project, seven stalls, if it cannot be accommodated in a parking garage, then we would be looking at that as an alternative way to still maintain some of that parking in our downtown area here.
Counsel Valerian?
Thank you, Mayor. Just point out the last page of the staff report, suggesting that this could go through a development variance permit process. And my, I understand that the town is still in negotiation with this proponent with the idea that we'll reach a successful negotiation. From my point of view, I don't see why we would give up this negotiating piece at this point when we can put it through a different process at a later date once we get to a development agreement and get the terms of our agreement laid out. So I'm going to move the alternate, which is that a reduction in parking requirements for the George Hotel and residents be considered after rezoning through the development variance permit process. I'm not sure why we need to reduce these number of parking spaces right now while we're still in discussions over other, a bunch of other items.
First of all, if there's any staff comment on that. But as I read the original recommendation, that doesn't actually tie us to anything. That simply indicates that there would be provisions would be made for reduction in required parking stalls, subject to a professional report by a traffic engineer. So that could be one or it could be 20. Doesn't really tie us down to anything. So I don't see that being much different from that alternate. But if I'm missing that, please tell me.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of a difference there because if it's in the zoning bylaw, based on the report, that should be in itself enough. Whereas with the development variance permit, that's a more formal approval process where there's a bit more room for particular things you would like to ask. So there's a little bit of a difference in there. And both options are available for you. So either way, would be an effective way to deal with this.
Any other comments at this point? Okay, well, it's been moved. Is there a second there to, first of all? Sure, go ahead.
So to clarify, you're saying if it happens today, it will happen during the variance, during the actual permit stage, instead of changing the bylaw? Or this won't have any effect when he goes to apply for his actual variance on his development permit? What's, sorry, I'm just generally saying let's not do it today because we're in negotiation with them. But if we did it today, we could still take it back at the permit stage? Is that what you're saying?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor. This alternative recommendation would result in a separate process. So they would need to make an application for that and then it would be dealt with separately. I think with the staff recommendation in mind, putting it in the zoning, that way, the option is already built into the zoning. I think in the development agreement, that's the other item that will be key to this, will all be zoning. We also have another alternative option actually to arrange things that we think are important. So from that perspective, that's why the staff recommendation is to put it in the zoning because with the zoning and the development agreement, it's a bit more efficient that way. And we don't need to follow a separate process down the road for variance because the variance would be a freestanding permit, pretty much like some variance that we discussed last week, where we specifically vary a provision in the zoning bylaw. There's notification process from neighbors. So it's a bit more, there's more process involved than if it's included in the zoning bylaw, but also addressed in the development agreement.
Counsel Sanjanko?
I appreciate Counsel Valerian's thought process and always do. But I have to say that I recommend going with staff, the staff recommendation, because it's a more streamlined process, it sounds like. And while at the same time not holding us particularly to anything. So I would actually, if there is no second there, I would move this recommendation forward.
So first of all, is there a second for Counsel Valerian's motion? Okay. Okay, seeing that, I will second this motion. And I agree that we don't need to add further process to the processes we've already had. And I think there's enough room in here for us to still have some discussions if necessary. Okay, so with that, any further discussion? Not, then all in favor? Imposed? That was carried. Counsel Valerian imposed. So 7.4, George Town Residence Development Agreement Items. Again, back to you, Andre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in this report, staff is providing an overview of the items for the development agreement. This was one of the topics for second reading. And it includes a table that lists a whole bunch of items related to the project. Some of it has also been discussed before. But the key ingredients or key items for the development agreement are to secure the housing contribution, humanity contribution, the process around Wind Road, the sale of Wind Road, but also servicing requirements and other infrastructure improvements that may be required for the project. And it will provide a list of that type of components and that need to go on title to secure different items. Say, geotechnical hazards, environment sensitive area related components. It also lists the development permits and the timing. So it's like a roadmap for a future process of the development. And the outline is there, identifies the topics. The details are still under discussion with the developer. So before we can move forward to the information meeting and public hearing, we would still need to get back to you with the results of our discussions with the developer. But at least an outline of what will be included there. There are two other important items there in the report that I should highlight to you. And that's for the official community plan, a section on the consultation process for an official community plan amendment. In this case, needed to deal with the height and to change the park policy. The local government has particular expectations about consultation and council needs to consider that explicitly. So there's a table on page five of the report showing the parties that we have sent out referral requests to. Social and Cultural Regional District, School Commission Nation, School District, Ministries of Transportation, Agricultural Management Commission. There's also a couple of provincial and federal ministries and departments listed that are not consultant. And that's simply because through earlier processes, we know that they don't comment on OCP amendments. They only comment on projects once they get to a stage that they need their approval. For example, in the harbor area, once you're ready to create a marina, at that time, the Department of Fisheries and Ocean wants to review your project. And then finally, the Gibson's Furniture Fire Department and Town Gibson staff is coming to give it, of course. And then as part of the bylaw, I think later on agenda, there's a recommendation to confirm that this is sufficient consultation. If you want additional consultation, that's fine too. Please let me know. Another section related to the official community plan is that council has to consider the financial plan and waste management plans. So with regards to the financial plan, I outlined a couple of implications there. If the project would be approved and had successfully operated, it would result in additional tax revenue. And we had the report on that last year. But also it would be additional costs because more residents and a hotel and community will have some incremental cost in how we operate our services by enforcement. Coriolis last year concluded that they were of the opinion that it would almost certainly make a net positive contribution. And then finally, the capital plan, which is our plans for investing in town infrastructure, they would probably be updated down the road because part of this project would result in DCC payments. And that means that down the road, the town actually has some funding for improvements to infrastructure. And with regards to waste and garbage, those are existing plans that over time will need to be updated to reflect this project. Then the third item that I need to highlight to you is for the zoning bylaw. As discussed with the previous report, I changed the text about the parking requirements. And what is now added is wording that is quite similar to other wording that we already have in the bylaw for different scenarios in Part Six, it outlines the parking requirements. It outlines that based on a study from a professional engineer, reduction of parking may be considered up to 20% as long as there are supporting evidence for that. So with that, outline of the development agreement for you. And let me see, just checking the recommendations. Oh, we requested you endorse those items for the development agreement. And we'll get it back to you once we have the results of negotiations.
Thank you, Counsel Valerian.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment staff on this comprehensive report. I think it's really important for everybody, council and residents, to see all this in one place, all these different items that have been thrown around at different times in a different context. This is a hugely important piece of information. And it's really well laid out. So I would make, leave the recommendation though, leave open for, you know, the comments.
Thank you. Second, Counsel Longley? I agree with your comments on that as well. It's laid out very clearly what we have to get through. And as the presenter in the delegation talked about earlier, there's regulatory requirements that we have to meet. And that sort of sets out a good part of what these are. And nothing further, I'll call for a vote on that then, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for your work, Andre. It's a very comprehensive reports. And I know you've been working very hard to get that information to us. 8.1, so Mr. Leonard, who's the new chair of the Agricultural Land Commission, is going to pay us a visit in September. September 14th, was it, Manny?
I think 16.
Or 16, okay. We are lining up some places for him to see. So if, I think probably if any members of council have some suggestions as to things that the thing is done and should see while he's here, perhaps relate that to Manny. I know we've got a couple of ideas already lined up. Do you want to add anything to that, Manny?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, after the appointment of Mr. Leonard, the town sends congratulations and invited him to come and visit the coast in light of our ongoing discussions about food security and agricultural related issues. They responded quite positively. And so one of the things that they ask is for us to draft an itinerary that's for them to consider. Staff has been having conversations with different folks who are involved in food security and agricultural related issues on the coast and have a bit of a draft to propose to council just to highlight some of the challenges and opportunities on the coast as it relates to food. Target Marine, silver soils, Prosetme Brewery, the Gibson's public market, the folks from the One Straw Society. And one of the requests from the chair is that we organize a roundtable discussion with the regional leaders about, so they can hear directly from everyone what issues are, how they affect.
Thank you. Okay, so just ask for motion to receive that then. Counsel Valerian, Counsel Sanjanko, all in favor? And that's carried. 9.1, that's for final adoption for the rates, fees and charges that are in the bylaw. We've been through that now three times. Counsel Sanjanko, Counsel Valerian, all in favor? And that's carried as well. 9.2, so this is the amendment that you were talking about earlier that we discussed and a recommendation, I think, that I voted second reading. Now, Counsel Valerian, I think at this point you have had something you wanted to raise?
Mr. Mayor, that's the next one, 9.3, zoning amendment.
I might be wrong here, but I...
Yeah, okay.
Because the next one's just for giving it second reading. So I'm wondering, okay, no, it's fine. I guess that works. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, sorry. We'll do it on the next one then. Okay, so just ask for a motion then for the 9.2. So Counsel Valerian, Counsel Sanjanko, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, 9.3. So this is, give second reading to the George Town Residence zoning amendment bylaw. Now, you had something that you wanted to raise, I think, around?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just begin my checking with staff. I'd like to hear from them on this. I looked through the zoning amendment bylaw for the second time and I just got stuck on the words specification of tourists. and I just got stuck on the words specification of tourist accommodation. Principal use for Sub Area One, tourist accommodation. I have no illusions that this proponent is planning to not build a hotel or anything like that, but I am trying to manage risk for some future owner or some use of a loophole that may or may not exist. So I guess first question for proposing this to staff is, is there a possibility that the words tourist accommodation could transform from something that's not, from a hotel into something different that we haven't conceived of or that exists out there that is something along the lines of a timeshare condominium or some kind of vacation rental that does house tourists but that is not a longer hotel with all the jobs and benefits? And the convention center has helped them on this that is associated with that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the term tourist accommodation is one of the primary uses for the, in the zoning bylaw, which means that's the main use on part of that site. The term tourist accommodation was chosen because that's an existing term in our zoning bylaw. And it talks about the literal, the definition of that says that it's a use providing for the accommodation of the transient public in the building, providing sleeping facilities. And it may also include cooking and dining facilities. So it's a general definition. And I can't really answer Counsel Valerio's question, I think, in detail at this point. We'll need to review that if council wishes so.
So based on that, I think it's worth not losing sight of. So I don't know, corporate officer, whether it's just an addition or an amendment to the recommendation. Let's call it an amendment. So it would be something along the lines of, and I'm open to wording, but in that prior to third reading, so not right now, but once we've been through public hearing, staff. So prior to third reading, staff report on the potential for land use other than hotel under tourist accommodation zoning definition and options to clarify the definition to exclude non-hotel uses. Does that, is that something that's doable by staff? Is it clear enough, I guess, what's being asked there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's clear enough. One suggestion is it'd be an entirely separate motion from, instead of having an amendment just because of the legal finesse of the zoning bylaw amendment. And we must sort of clarify that, should do it in a separate video motion.
Okay, so I think really then what is being suggested there, Counsel Valerio, is that you would be making a resolution separate from this, asking that staff report back on the, as you indicated, the potential for land use other than a hotel under tourist accommodation zoning definition. Is that trying to capture what you'd like to, just have that information? Okay, so you want to move that then, say you move that? Counsel Lumley? Any further discussion on that? All in favor then? Okay, so that's carried. Ask for a mover, second reading then for the George Hotel Residence zoning amendment bylaw. Counsel Sengenko, Counsel Valerio, all in favor? That's carried. Next meeting, September 1. Out of great summer, motion to adjourn please. Counsel Lumley, Counsel Valerio, all in favor? Carry.